Good afternoon, welcome to the Board of Commissioners special called meeting, our work session for March 22nd, 2016. We'll call the meeting to order. We have two tabs this afternoon. The first is Cobb County Transportation Agency. Mr. Wilgus, I believe your staff or you are going to present the information regarding the rebranding project.
Oh, it's going to be me. This is really a presentation and good afternoon Chairman, Mistress, Mr. Hankerson. This is really the final stages of our rebranding and this is just to let you know what we've got going because it's not just what we're going to do with the buses, it's what we're going to do with the system. So, let's go ahead. What you see today, I'll go back again over the Cobb Link logo. We'll also look at our website, what we're looking at for a website, out for a draft and that also goes with an app, our bus stop signage, our bus map, and I'll point out some things there, our bus route information, and then you'll see our bus designs and our additional bus designs for like paratransit and that kind of stuff, and finally some of the signs we're looking at but put inside the bus. There again is the logo, the Cobb Link logo. Link obviously is our brand positioning, part of Connect. The C obviously stands for Cobb and it makes it distinctive and that's one of our goals of the branding. The link is in blue since it's reminiscent of the color the original CCT buses were although it's a completely different shade. The gold, the Cobb is in gold as the Cobb County seal is gold, and then with our COBB you see the different colors that we're using there, and then the font that we're using is something that's timeless and it's not trending, it's not going to go out of style in two or three years. So, this is the logo that you've seen that will be on everything that we do, both our stationary, our cards, our signs, our, everything that you see out there will be that. This is what we're looking like for a website. Commute the Smart Way is really the logo, is really what we've tried to put out there because as we get our new buses in, we will have wifi on those buses. We have a lot of advantages to our new buses that are not there in the system right now. You also see an app on the phone as we implement our automatic vehicle locator, AVL system, as opposed to standing there and wondering and waiting, when is my bus going to be here? You'll be able to pull up the app, see where the bus is, so you'll be able to see how long of a wait that you'll have, and it's a lot more information particularly if you're in the downtown area and that kind of stuff in Atlanta. You'll be able to know much more better where the bus is, how much time that you have to get to the stop, all that kind of stuff. So, what you see there is our website draft, using again the colors. You'll see that the top looks, is the same kind of color scheme as the bus is with the gray, the yellow top, and then the Cobb Link, and we've done the same thing throughout all our new computerized systems that we're looking at. Again, this is a draft and any of your comments are welcome. As I said, we're not just rebranding the buses, we're rebranding the system. So, this is what our new stop, our new signs were, would look like. As I drove here today, I went through several signs on the 15 and, you know, looking at the same sign, same location, everything else, it's the same color scheme and it kind of goes away. This is something new in that you'll see the Cobb Link sign that will be similar, but what we've done is color coded, and this is our suggestion as a draft, color coded each of the routes so that you'll be able to quickly say, okay, this is a stop for the 20, the 30, the 10, that kind of stuff. So, each of them have a different color and this is how we would, what we would do to change every single stop that we've got in the system. Again, we're rebranding, we're rebranding the whole system. This is the new route map. This has got the colored routes that you see as well as everything that we run in and out of Cobb County. The one thing that I would make note of, again, it's a very vibrant bus map, again, it's a draft, but as Commissioner Ottenoff heard several times over the last couple of evenings, there's a lot of desire to have transit, a lot of questions about, well, why don't we link to MARTA, why don't we do that? Well, if you look at the map, you'll see that we actually do link to MARTA at Art Center, North Avenue Civic Center, Five Points, HU Homes. We link to MARTA all over the place. We show the MARTA 12 that comes into Cobb County to the Cumberland Transfer Center. So, there's a lot of connectivity there that we just need to reintroduce to the public who wants to use transit as well as give them the opportunity to experience this new Cobb Link service on our new buses. But, this is the route map that you see. We'll have to add the 25 in there when we implement that later this year. But, you see both of the express routes, the flex routes are shown on there, again, a little different color, and each of the routes has a different color and designation. This would be what our route collateral will look like. If you've ever seen these, they're folded up there in different locations. This one is actually a mix of several things because it says 10C which is more of an express route, but underneath it you see Circulator. So, you see a lot of the different ways that we're going to use the color scheme and the information to make new fresh material that will have all the updated schedule, will have all the information on both the bus route that they're looking at as well as about Cobb Link. So, this is what we would have for the traveling public to be able to use and be aware of what we've got. This of course is the new bus, the new buses. This is actually our CNG bus. We've got two of these that come in June-ish, somewhere through there. So, this is the color scheme is what it will look like on our CNG buses. That is our diesel bus. You've all had a chance to see this. We've got this bus here. The rest of these buses start rolling in here very shortly. Well, we'll have the first of the 33 of these will show up and then the two CNGs later this year. But, this is the new bus that you've all gotten a chance to see, and this is what we're going to change the rest of the fleet to look like. While we've got these new buses with wifi, we've also got our, some of our older buses that will be replaced over the next two years. This is what, for instance, our New Flyer. It's a brand of bus, it's what, right now you see, a lot of these are out there on the CCT. This is what you see as a CCT bus. We're going to repaint these and this is what that paint scheme looks like on one of our older buses. This is our express routes, these are MCI coaches. Again, we're recoding and repainting and rebranding them as well. We will start refurbishing some of these buses. Hopefully, we've got some funds on the way to do that, some of these buses later in the year. We, the commission's already, the board's already approved us going after some Go Transit buses, Go Transit money, and that, some of that money would be go to refurbish some of these. These would be our lift buses, previously known as paratransit. We've really got two versions and they really depend on where the lift is, but this is what our lift, our paratransit vehicles would look like, again, using the same rebranding color scheme. That's version one where the lift is in the back. This is version two where the lift is in the front. It's hard to tell, but you're looking at where that one door is for lift. But, this is what our paratransit buses would look like. We've got new paratransit buses on the way as well and they will come in with this, but again, we have to repaint and rebrand our older buses. This is really what our placards will look like inside so that we explain a little more to the riding public when we're talking about commuting the smart way, what we're talking about, and also giving them a schedule. So, everybody who is on our system is aware that we are in the way of rebranding and summer 2016 CCT will then be called Cobb Link on all of our material. This is another of the bus placard, again, it's a draft that says again that we will be called Cobb Link and the smart way to connect you to the places you want to be and gives them the website. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Great, appreciate it. Commissioners, Commissioner Wetherford.
Mr. Wilgus, when you went back to the rebranding of all the bus stop signs, I like that, but I noticed you put the phone number on there. We've done a lot of work with website, could we not put the website on there as well?
Sure, we'll take that as a comment and add it, sir.
I mean, people, we want them to use the smartphone and the app and everything.
Absolutely.
Why don't we just give them the website link up there along with the phone number?
Well, we've got the CobbLink.com.
I'm sorry, did I not see that? Okay, I did.
But, we will.
Never mind, I'll go back to that.
That is something we do want them to use website.
Commissioner.
It was a good suggestion, thanks for getting it done quick.
We move quick, sir.
Now, Cobb Link, that's like the overall.
Yes.
Right, and I think we talked about, are you going to have like the Circulator when we get that in? Is it just going to say Cobb Link on the outside or is it going to say something?
It'll say Circulator.
Okay, so, no, let's go back to that sign. Are there any stops that the Circulator is going to that are regular Cobb Link stops to? I mean, so is it going to be the same sign and different things on the bottom or?
It will show different things on the bottom. There are some consistent stops in the, certainly at the Cumberland Transfer Center, and there's probably a couple on Cobb Parkway that are similar, so they, as well as on the South Leg. So, they will have both the number and the Circulator.
Right, because the Circulator buses are going to have something different on the side, right? So, people are going to have to know which ones they need to get on, right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
Thank you Chairman. We had this original presentation when we saw the new Cobb Link logo. I had inquired about the Flex Bus system and I'm curious to know how that will be integrated in this rebranding effort.
I'm looking back here because I'm not, I don't remember how Flex is going to be in there as well. We are going to rebrand, all right, we are going to put Cobb Link on the Flex buses too.
Okay.
Now, I don't know that we'll change it from the color scheme necessarily, but we will show particularly the brand, the COBB. We'll add that to the buses at the very least.
Okay, yeah, seeing the logo on it, especially I think the bright colors on it and just having that continuity across the system would be attractive for the Flex Bus.
Commissioner.
And can you add a QR code so they can download the app while they're waiting to see if the bus is on schedule or late or?
We'll certainly, we'll certainly look at that, yes ma'am. Absolutely, because that would be, that would be very helpful to have the QR code in there and then it'd just pull everything in automatically.
That's what I meant earlier.
Oh, it's not on there yet, sir.
Hurry up.
Chairman, I mean, your entire team needs to be complimented. This is a great step forward for our entire transit system. I think it sets a stage for the growth and identification that's positive and I appreciate your team doing all that. I think as we roll it out this fall, people appreciate very much what we've done to make it easier for folks to get around and identify where they're at and how to get to where they want to go easiest. We, the signage and the bus stops and all that, I know you're being a little bit more aggressive with that down in the Cumberland District. To what degree, how will the signage play or does that play into advertising going forward? Is all the advertising going to be inside the bus?
We're looking right now at just having advertising inside the bus as well as using the wifi on the bus to have digital advertising, similar, very similar to what MLB at the Ballpark runs right now where once you step into that geo fence, you start getting messages about, you know, thank you, this is your 10th time riding, this is your Starbucks coupon for today, these are the deals along your route. So, we're looking at the potential, we're still working with advertisers and everyone else on this, but we're looking at using a digital advertising throughout the system. So, we'll be, we'll be moving away from the bus wraps and that kind of stuff by having digital advertising on the bus.
Terrific, terrific, very good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
If we could, just real quick so that, yeah, what, our next step really, we finalize our collateral layouts, and then what we're doing is we're, we're finalizing and we're going to implement a communications rollout plan around the launch of the new buses, late spring or early summer. What that means is we're going to take the buses on tour so that we'll be going to all six cities, plus we'll be going to Mableton, plus we'll be going to Vinings to take the bus there and really have like a touch of bus thing so people can understand what these new buses are like, they can get on, they can see, just like the commissioners have had the opportunity. So, we've got a lot of stuff where we're going to start taking these around with a, really a public relations and communication rollout so that everybody is familiar with the rebranding.
Perfect.
So, you'll see that from us this spring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Miss. Tab two is public safety, Mr. Heaton. I believe you want to begin our item.
Good afternoon Chairman, Board members and County Manager. As many of you guys know, in the mid 70s, the Cobb County Fire Department started its own education division trying to prevent fires and fire fatalities, and that progressed throughout the years and in the mid 90s, Mr. Hankerson directed the fire chief at that time to, we've got to find a more efficient way and better way of doing things. And so, in 2009, we opened our Safety Village and in March of 2013, we hired Allison Carter to be our Safety Village Director. Allison has done an outstanding job in her three years here and also, I have to say, just recently was recognized as a nominee of the YWCA Women of Achievement. And so, I'm going to ask Allison to come up today and give you an update on where we are with the Safety Village and the operation there.
Thanks.
Allison Carter.
Thank you so much Sam. And just to be clear, I just want to make sure I keep up with time. We have until seven, right? That's what we have?
We're going to leave in about 10 minutes, but you can keep going.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, since this is my first time, I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, no problem.
So, thank you Chairman Lee and the Board of Commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you all today. As Sam said, as you know, in 1978, we partnered with the school district.
So, Allison, who do you have here from your board? Who from your board is here?
Oh, I have several members from the board. I have our foundation chair, Jason Saliba. I have chair-elect Nerdan. Helen Gorm sits on our board. We have Sam Heaton, we have Preston Howard, we have Devin Seeball and...
That's Zach's dad, right?
That's what, Zach's dad, right, yeah, that's AKA Zach's dad. We also have Judy Skill who sits on our board and Sherry sits on the board. Matt and Lauren also represent, and Viva Price is here from Safe Kids.
What about Mr. Hankerson?
Mr. Hankerson is also present here.
Great.
And Bob Weatherford is also. I have so many, so many here. Everybody in the audience is now a part of the Safety Village Foundation. I said Bob, I said Bob at the very end.
No, I'm not.
You did all, everybody, everybody.
We appreciate you being here.
You just don't have voting rights.
We appreciate the board, foundation boards, Commissioner Gorm specifically, thank you for being with us today.
Thank you for reminding me to do that. My apologies.
Absolutely, here for you.
Great, I shouldn't have made the seven o'clock comment. Okay, so as you know, in 1978, oh, you want me to, yeah, sorry, that one, okay, thank In 1978, we partnered with the school district and started providing the state mandated fire and life prevention education. As population grew, it was apparent, cost-wise and logistically, we needed to find a more efficient way to educate. The result was the Cobb County Safety Village, which is the only one of its kind in the region. Its mission is to provide the highest quality safety education and training available to enable our citizens to prepare and protect themselves and others from accidental death, injury, and destruction of property. Our motto is tell me and I'll forget, show me and I may remember, involve me and I will learn for a lifetime. And as you know, hands-on, interactive learning is how we all learn and retain information. If my father hadn't taught me how to change a tire at the age of 16, by the time I was 20 with a flat tire, I would have just been standing there going, what do I do now? So, truly, when you go through the motions, you remember more things and retain it better. So, since 2009, you can see how many students we have been able to reach and impact throughout that. So, not only have we educated almost 200,000 students and residents, we have reduced costs and provided a unique, hands-on approach to personal safety education. And how did we do it? We reduced our overtime by 31%. We reduced mileage reimbursement by approximately 12,000, increased police exposure to students by 98%, which is huge. So, as you remember, in 2009, when we opened, Cobb PD gave us two educators, which is fantastic. It's a great, positive experience for these kids to be in front of law enforcement. We used to have 56 instructors available for overtime when needed and today we have less than 30. On any given day, we may have had as many as 28 instructors on overtime teaching in the schools, and today we may have one or two that helps with pre-visits on occasions. Because we are more efficient, we were able to add the city of Myrieta Schools, private home schools, private schools, homeschool groups, and camps during the summer months. The Safety Village is also supported by the Safety Village Foundation financially and their mission is to serve as an advocate, develop partnerships, and secure resources in support of the Cobb County Safety Village. The vision is a sustainable Cobb County Safety Village that builds a safer community through advocacy and education. One way that the foundation has reinvested back into the Safety Village is that they have taken two of our proceeds, two proceeds from our touch of trucks, which equaled $34,000 to go to the building costs for our fire and police public safety buildings. The growth of the village would not be made possible without the support of our wonderful sponsors, and since the last three years since I have come on, I just wanted to highlight some of the newer sponsors that we have. So, Advanced Disposal, Batteries Plus, Bluebird Bus, Cobb County Government, Cobb County School System, Ed Voyle's Automotive, Firehouse Subs, Public Safety Foundation, Green Power, Green Power EMC, Georgia Power, Myrieta City Schools, and the Scott Safety Foundation. And I will say that many of the sponsors that we have listed there today continue to give back to us and support us every year. With these new partnerships, I'm excited to say that we have four new additions to the Safety Village this year. One is our police and fire buildings. So, now we will be able to utilize these, these two resources and do our stop, drop, and roll, gun safety, and our latchkey programs out into these facilities. We also have our school building, which I'm very excited about, working with Jay Dunn to get this constructed, and so this is on track to be finished and completed by the time school season rolls around in August. And then our solar array is in place. The ribbon cutting is on April 22nd, Earth Day, and this is just a great technology that we have installed that now we can start talking about kilowatts and how solar energy is stored. So, and, once those are all out, I'd like to invite you all out for a personal tour to see all the progress in all the new buildings. With the increased exposure, the usage of the David Hankerson Educational Building has grown from second and fourth grade education programs to include, in 2013, we started a senior adult safety program which includes falls prevention, kitchen safety, home escape plans, identity fraud prevention, and fire extinguisher exercises. And then coming soon, we, this summer, we will actually be hosting a training and all of our educators will be certified in a CarFit program. And if you're not familiar, so CarFit is an educational program that provides a quick and yet comprehensive review of how well you are a fit for your vehicle. So, it's a system that our adult seniors will be able to provide and they'll come up to different stations and they'll be able to make sure that the mirrors are at the exact locations that they need to be, that the height of their seat is at the correct location, and so we'll be able to now provide that program. We've hosted the Police Explorers Training. Just recently, two or three weekends ago, they held their first competition at the Safety Village and it was a huge success. Most of the facilities that they do these trainings at and competitions don't have anything compared to what we have. They were able to utilize WildStar and that building and do certain trainings in there and they did, they utilized the whole facility. So, it was really neat experience to be able to have that training. K-9 and SWAT use our facility all the time, both Cobb PD and SO. We host the Metro Atlanta Firefighters Conference every year. We now host the Risk Management Flagger Course. We have also expanded our programs with the Boys and Girl Scouts programs. I started with Boy Scouts mainly because I have two boys, but I had all of their VPs come down and take a look at our facility and see what we could do hands-on. And so, we are working on a merit badge university and just recently, they asked me to join their Safety and Health Committee, which is looking at all of their programs and how are they being safe about it. So, we're expanding our relationship with them. We hosted at the end of January, the Cobb County School Science Fair, and that was a huge success. We had over 300 students there with their parents to be able to utilize the facility and it was the one time that Tim Brown said that most of the parents would leave after their, after the judging was going on, and so while everybody was calculating the scores, they would all leave. Well, they all decided to stay and we gave tours of the facility and they were able to walk the grounds, so it was really neat. And then we do all of our 911 testing. We hosted the International Safety Village Conference in 2013. We held the, last year, we held the first Public Safety Career Day. We host Camp Puzzle, which is an absolute day for kids on the autism spectrum. We host our Family Fun Safety Days in the summer and many more on top of that. And on top of that, only at this facility can one come, rain or shine to Safe Kids and get their child's car seat inspected and installed properly for free. Safe Kids Cobb County checks more car seats than any other coalition in the Southeast. In Georgia, they are number one in the, in the number of car seats installed and install 50% more than any other coalition, and this is only possible because they have the three bays to pull six cars in in any one town to be inspected, and this is only possible at the Safety Village. So, the question becomes, how many baby, oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. I want to go through their slides, my apologies. I want to go through, so on the screen you'll see in 2008, before the Safety Village, they were able to inspect roughly 1,050 car seats, and now with the Safety Village, they are averaging almost 2,400 at the 2015 year-to-date. So, as you can see, that's 120% increase in our residents' lives that they're keeping safe. And then with distribution, they were roughly at about 587 in 2008 and they've increased about 26% to 736. So, great, great strides in providing that safety education. So, the question becomes, how many babies' lives have been saved because their car seats were installed properly? And how many senior adults prevented a fire in their kitchen because of personal safety education? And how many students are more comfortable coming up and talking to law enforcement if they needed to? And I can tell you from the fire prevention side how prevention education is making an impact there. So, in this slide, you'll see in 1993, we had a population of 450,000 and roughly 470 structure fires. In 2010, we had 720,000 population with structure fires of 466. In the same timeframe, 2010, if you take all of the fire departments in Cobb County, that just led to 612 structure fires. And in 2015, the population almost at 700,000, we have structure fires last year of 289. And to compare it to our sister counties, in 2010, they took Gwinnett into Cab roughly that had the same population that we did, and you can see that they have over 300 more structure fires than Cobb County combined, all of Cobb County Fire Departments combined. But, it really comes down to saving lives. So, is it working? So, you look at structure fires, in 1972 to 1980, there were a total of 53 fire deaths and you go all the way down to 2010 to 2015 and we've had a collective 17 fire deaths. So, I get asked all the time, how do you know if it's working? How do you know if prevention education is working? And I tell you, when I started at the Safety Village three years ago, I was putting together a presentation to go out into the community and I had one of the educators come to me and they said, I think you should listen to this 911 call, you might be able to use it. So, for three and a half minutes, I listened to an eight-year-old girl with a domestic violence situation behind her calling 911 and speaking with the operator and telling her what, telling her what was going on, and they, and the operator said, no worries, police are on their way, stay calm, stay where you are, stay on the line with me, stay on the line with me, and the little girl said, oh, I know, because I learned it at the Safety Village. So, I thank you again for having me come and speak with you all today and I hope you have me back to tell you about all the progress that we're making.
We'll have you back at seven tonight, how's that?
Exactly.
Allison, any questions from the board? Commissioner.
Are there any other similar villages or programs in the metro area?
There are no other Safety Villages in the state of Georgia. There's only 16 in the United States and there's 18 in Canada. The one that's closest to us, there is one that I just found out about in Knoxville. It's run by their police department. I'm actually going to talk to Mr. Hankerson if I can go up and visit them because they do have, they sit on acres, it's pretty impressive. The next one that's closest to us would be Orlando, which we went to the international conference last year for them.
Interesting, so are you attracting visitors from outside of Cobb County?
We are.
Other schools, okay.
Every day. Well, I get asked all the time whether other schools can come in. Obviously, it's a Cobb County facility, so we, I mean, we educate 22,000 kids a year. So, by the time, because Cobb County is the second largest education system, by the time that I get all those kids through, truly, we already have the calendar set for next year. I only have 12 days that we don't have schools provided, and that's when we bring in our special needs, our home schools and our private schools. So, the question becomes, can we bring in? Yes, if we have an open spot that all the Cobb County schools have been taken, we have finished with them, then we will. We have our first Roswell private school coming next week.
Wow, very good.
Yes ma'am.
Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Commissioner. I just wanna thank you for providing information for our Friday update, 'cause to answer your question, is it working? I think you can say it is, don't, can't you?
Yes, I know it is, I know it is.
We're talking about, we had a dryer vent fire in, in Atlanta Country Club about a week ago, and we put out information in the Friday update and-
Yes, so they ca, um, Kim called and, and needed information on dryer vent safety, and so we pulled it up and we provided that tour, and then I kept thinking, huh, you know, I'm in a rental house, we're in the middle of building our house, and I thought, I am pretty sure that dryer vent hasn't been checked in a very long time, and so my dad was in town for the tribute, and he always needs a to-do list, and so I said, Dad, why don't you head on out and see, and clean up the dryer vent? And as a matter of fact, there was a whole ball of lint that was blocking our air, so that was, and now my dry, my clothes dry so much faster now, I'm so excited. But yes, so I am a testament, I practice what I preach, that's what I do.
Absolutely, there's, Commissioner Weatherford.
No, sir.
Commissioner.
I just wanna say thank you, Allison, to you and staff and the board for a job well done.
Thank you.
The Safety Village was up and running when I came on board, but I've seen how much it's grown and the education and training that we give to our students and how effective it is. So yes, I believe it is working.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
And congratulations, Nerdan, for being our Woman of the Year.
So, how much of the village is still left to be built out?
I honestly have about forty more buildings that I can put out there.
So we have a little work to do as a community to outreach and bring people to you to help.
Mm-hmm, I, I have a lot of relationships that were, that are, a lot of projects that are pending with some of our larger organizations, such as Coca-Cola and Home Depot and some of the others. I will have a mini Braves stadium out there, I just promised you that, go ahead and put it out there. And they have been out, and I talk to them because I wanna focus on concussions and sports-related injuries, but specifically concussions, and Coca-Cola has that education if I can get the Braves to build the stadium. So, you know, I'm the wish, I can just keep on going, I tell you, but, you know, the statistics, it kills me. So a third of our elementary students are either obese or overweight, and, which is just crazy to me. And so I think we have a true opportunity to be in front of twenty-two thousand kids a year, is to educate on healthy eating, healthy habits, portion control, how to read a food label, and so I'm trying to find a contact within the grocery store chains that I can build a grocery store, and there's tons of funding out there, grant-wise, that I can get this healthy eating education. But we have the ability to do that if I, once I get that up and running, and it just takes time, but I'll get there, I'll get there.
So I wanna thank your Foundation Board members for being here today, they've done an outstanding job-
I have.
-steering the program. Mr. Hankerson, one of his guiding lights was that there would be two separate entities out there to make sure that it's done the Cobb way, and that's been successful. Your folks have been excellent leaderships in the community to help make that happen, we appreciate that. A lot of things goes out, all the way back to Becky Denlinger, Chief Crider, and Chief Heaton, for helping make, make it a reality as well, it's the police department, everybody else associated with your group. I know that's a big, you've got a great team.
I do, I'm blessed.
Very good team. So thank you, we appreciate the update. One other question, EMF, we had, you and I go where on Sunday morning?
First United Methodist.
There you go, and we had an incident this past Sunday where someone fainted in the, in the, or actually got it upstairs in the balcony portion of it, and there was a, the good news is that all of our ushers were trained, specifically Devin, who's also First United Methodist Church, and what to do and how to respond and how to react to that issue. In my Sunday School class later, we had a conversation, and most folks were coming up saying, we, we know we got, what are they, I, what are these things on the wall, Devin?
AEDs.
AEDs, all over, but folks aren't familiar with what to do. Is there a way to cross bridges into some kinda education for adults or seniors?
Oh, of course.
As to what to, if we have an event, what do you do with that apparatus on the wall?
Of course. Oh, besides the second and fourth grade curriculum that, that we provide at the Safety Village, our educators are out in the community doing blood pressure checks twice a month at different senior centers, senior centers, but they are also going out, we have one instructor that does all corporate Cobb, so if a facility wanted them to come in and do some kind of fire escape training or AED training, we can provide that as well.
We might need it, our, our leadership meetings. Mr. Commander, you were behind us one hundred and eighty percent back when we began many, many moons ago. It's a dream and a vision you had, it's come to reality, so congratulations to you for helping move that along as well. Good job.
Thanks to the support of the board and the figures board members, Commissioner Warren and others, it's a dream come true, and certainly it was another step for efficiency. So, it's quite a-
And once again, in Cobb County, we show the rest of the world how to do it right. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Commander, we have nothing further for our work session, correct? We are adjourned until seven o'clock, Allison.